It is Tuesday, June 10th, and the time is 6:00 PM. Commissioner Shantz, would you lead us in this afternoon's invocation?
Well, Mr. Mayor. Our Heavenly Father, send down your blessings on this meeting of the Board of Commissioners, and upon the individual members who compromise it. Give the Board of Commissioners a clear sense of duty, and lead them to faithful discharge of things. Direct them in their deliberations at this meeting, so that all things may be done to the glory of thy name, and the welfare of the people in Madeira Beach.
Please remain standing and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was trying to give you a second.
Oh, please don't steal my time.
Always like making people run. I love watching people run. The city clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Lister?
Still here.
Commissioner Poe? Commissioner Shantz?
Here.
Mayor Palladino?
Here. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the provided minutes.
I'll make the motion.
We're changing that, aren't we? Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm good.
Okay. Um, I have a motion to, a motion and a second, for the approval of the provided minutes. There's no corrections. Would the city clerk, please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe? Commissioner Shantz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, I will, before I ask for approval for the agenda, I think there were some changes that needed to be made on the agenda. Commission, the first one to be asking for is for item number four. Excuse me. First of all, under Presentations, the presentation from Green Light will be first. Representative Peters will be second. She's actually running a few minutes behind. The second thing will be a referral under New Business of number four, the approval of the firefighter salary adjustment. And I was hoping the city manager would be, actually to, I'll skip one and wait to see if the city manager gets here. The other two, y'all heard in the workshop meeting, the referral of number seven and number eight to the next Board of Commissioners' workshop. And item number five actually is a rewording, and I have not received that yet from the city manager. Would somebody please grab the city manager?
The changing of the wording would be Authorization of Budgeted Expenditures.
Okay.
That's what you're looking for.
That was, okay, thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
Under that, prior had said Award of Engineering Service to CPWG for utility undergrounding. Is that the one you're referring to?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and I think that the appropriate title would be Authorization of Budgeted Expenditures.
With that, I would entertain a motion for the changes in the agenda for this evening.
I so move, Mr. Mayor.
Second?
Okay, motions are made in a second. Any discussion amongst the commission? All right. The city clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe? Commissioner Shantz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. First up, Presentations, and Brad, are you ready? Go ahead, man.
Okay. How's it going?
Good, good.
Great.
And you've got a bigger TV audience than you have here, so. Don't take only six people are watching you, brother.
Oh, I know. Yeah. Okay, well, good evening. My name's Brad Miller. I'm the CEO of the Pinellas Suncoast Transit Authority. Happy to be here. I've had the honor of meeting your mayor. I think I have the Guinness Polaroid records for the most number of mayor council presentations. And I got the honor of talking some and meeting, I think we've been here about the same time as your city manager, Shane, there. I think we got here about the same time. I've been the head of PSDA. We're the, of course, the bus system throughout Pinellas County. We have about 600 employees. We're a, and we levy a property tax to fund the bus system today. That's a key component of the Green Light Pinellas Plan that I'm going to talk about, is that that property tax will go away, which will be a huge savings for people in Madeira Beach. But, so I've been there for three years, and you probably know me, and I think the mayor does know me, as a person who's pretty into buses and trains and public transportation. When I got here, we were launching, the first thing, my first meeting of my life in Pinellas County was, we were launching this new improved service from St. Pete along Central Avenue with a trolley that runs now, connecting to St. Pete Beach, all the way to Pass the Grill down there, and it goes to Central Avenue. And that was, that has been a huge success, but what it meant at the time was that the beach trolley that runs through Madeira Beach, past John's Pass, was then going to end right there in sort of the downtown part of St. Pete Beach and not go all the way to Pass the Grill. And there was, believe me, right away, my emails and phone calls started happening that people were concerned that they couldn't get, people from the south, people from St. Pete Beach, tourists, and maybe even some people from St. Pete, couldn't get to John's Pass. They still could get to John's Pass, but they would just have to go to St. Pete Beach, change trolleys to get up to John's Pass. And sure enough, when we launched that service, the ridership to Madeira Beach and along that, that segment of the beach trolley did go down, as people had to make transfer, which no one, no one likes to do. But it was overwhelmed by the huge increase in ridership from St. Pete, or people from the beach going to the shops along Central Avenue from the beach to St. Pete. So that overall ridership went up. It was just that initially ridership went down, but I was getting all the emails. So I say all that, I'm happy to say, as I stand here today, ridership has continued to rebound. We've worked very hard, PSDA staff, Bob Lash is with me here from the marketing folks. Everyone has worked very hard with the folks at John's Pass to get the information out about how you get there by the trolley, and ridership has now rebounded to where it's much more than it was ever before. It's totally rebounded back, and ridership is going great on the beach trolley. But I sort of introduce that as saying, first of all, I learned early in my time here at PSDA that Madeira Beach is a very important place. It's a great place, and it's very important that we provide good transportation in this community, especially because you have a lot of things that people want to come and see here. I say that knowing that most of those folks who are riding the beach trolley today through Madeira Beach are not residents of Madeira Beach. They're tourists, and we have a huge number of tourists. But you look at me and you say, okay, he's the transit guy. He's certainly a proponent of this Green Light Pinellas Plan, because it will add a lot of trolleys and buses, and in the future, a rail system. But I understand, perhaps, and maybe I'll do my little trivia question here, how many, how many folks here have ever ridden the trolley or a PSDA bus? That's pretty good. That's pretty awesome. Okay. How many of you think, once we implement the Green Light Pinellas Plan after the vote this coming November, and then the service actually doubles, and we have a lot more buses, and ultimately a future rail, how many will possibly ride it? Well, fewer. Most of my presentations I give, I recognize that many of the people that I'm presenting to may never ride, or maybe have never ridden a trolley in Pinellas County. Maybe they've gone somewhere else and ridden public transportation, but they, they're not necessarily riders. And so what's, I know what's important, even though, of course, I would love it, it just because it has to do with a major increase in public transportation, this has to appeal to folks who may never actually use it, and may never actually ride it, and how it can benefit the citizens of Madeira Beach. We're making this presentation, I'm making this presentation around the community at all 24 cities in Pinellas County, with the hope that you might consider, as the council, that this might be a benefit to your citizens, and maybe you'll join about a dozen of the cities already who have passed non-binding but resolutions of endorsement of the Green Light Pinellas Plan. Again, I, I am certainly a transit guy myself, and that's sort of an understatement. I was a bus for Halloween when I was a kid, two times. My dad, whenever we went on trips, we rode public transit, took pictures, not one picture of the Eiffel Tower, but pictures of all of the buses and trains at Paris once. But again, I know that this vote is totally different than that. It's about people, for people to view it about their community, and how it can help their community improve. I'll just, I just have a very, very small, just a couple slides. Before I, before I came here, I worked in Charlotte, North Carolina, and this is a map I've got up on the screen here.
Brad, I'm sorry to stop you. Commissioner, if you'd like to step down so you can see the presentation?
You can, yeah.
Sorry about that, sir.
I don't know. That would be fine. Turn around then.
Brad, you need to turn that.
Thing around?
Yeah. Just moves wherever it's comfortable.
Okay. I'm about halfway done. So.
Deputy, you want to flip the light or two?
This is, this is a map of Charlotte, North Carolina, or Mecklenburg County, North Carolina, where Charlotte's located. Charlotte passed a sales tax, just like we're talking about, see, Representative Peters is trying this, hello, in 1998. And before, before they passed the sales tax, they had a relatively, this is a route map of the bus system they had in Charlotte back then, actually, it was smaller than what PSDA already has today, and this is a map, well, 2012, relatively what they have today. It transformed the, the system from the left to the right. They also implemented a rail line that was so successful that they're actually doubling, or more than doubling, the length of it now and extending it. But if you look at the map on the left, the citizens of Pinellas County, I mean, of Mecklenburg County voted for the sales tax in 98. Most of the voters who voted for that live in those white areas that there was hardly any service. And today, many, most of the people that are riding the new expanded service weren't, most of the people that are riding didn't even live there. The people that voted for this thing still live in their suburban homes, they have their cars, and life pretty much goes on as it has. The people that are riding, and they are riding in droves, are their kids, are young people, are young people that used to grow up in Charlotte and then moved out. They would go off to college and they wouldn't come back, because they would choose, they're choosing, and data supports this, they're choosing to live where they have transportation options. They're choosing to live in places like DC, or Chicago, or Austin, Texas, where they have transportation options. And that's what's happening now. I saw it. They are moving back to Charlotte, and they are living in these apartments, new apartments that didn't exist before, that are growing up all along all the transit lines, and they are going back there to live and watch the Charlotte Bobcats lose, or whatever, and then they, and raise their families. That's what's going to happen here in Pinellas County, following the passage of this Green Light Pinellas Plan. That is something that we certainly can expect. I know it will happen. So the Green Light Pinellas Plan certainly has value to millennials, to the youngest generation, who are, statistics show, they're getting their driver's license later, they are driving less, they're riding transit more nationwide and in the Tampa Bay area. It's also certainly a huge boon for our tourists. The Suncoast Beach Trolley, which goes up and down Gulf Boulevard, right through Madeira Beach here, will double. So instead of every half hour that the, that the trolley's run sometimes, at some, in the peak hours, it'll run every 15 minutes. Will also be extended later in night and on the weekends, to run past midnight. Right now, it ends at around 11 o'clock. Certainly will benefit the tourists, who, under a sales tax provision as we're talking, now pay for the services that they provide, instead of just the property owners who are paying for helping to support the tourist services. Certainly, just as important for seniors as it is for millennials. The AARP has just come out with a study that shows that seniors are doing the same thing that the young people are doing. They are choosing where they live, or where they're going to retire and live, where they have transportation options, much more than they ever did before. And certainly, with Pinellas County having a large number of seniors, and folks needing a way to get around, perhaps they can't use a car, or they don't have access to a car, the Green Light Pinellas Plan provides seniors an opportunity that they can get and stay in their home, and instead of, and use, have transportation. I put veterans on this slide because I think that's sort of a key component. Of course, I believe almost everyone can benefit from Green Light Pinellas, but I put veterans on there because, obviously, this is a program that will help create jobs. PSDA is, PSDA as an agency is constantly hiring. You know anyone who needs a job? We are hiring today, I know. We're always hiring, and we do have, we do favor and appreciate veterans coming to work for us. Under the Green Light Pinellas Plan, we will obviously be doing a lot of contracting, and we will put preferential clauses in those agreements so that veterans can be employed through the Green Light Pinellas Plan. But again, that's sort of, that's not the message, the key takeaway from my presentation, I know this is not about buses and trains. This is about how it benefits you, how it benefits Madeira Beach and our community, no matter where we live in Pinellas County. Although, we will have these very awesome sexy buses going, bus rapid transits going up and down the line, and in fact, new and improved routes to, from the, from inland out here to Madeira Beach to connect people that way. Most importantly, of course, this is about access to jobs. Many people who work at the hotels along the beach need public transit because they don't have parking spaces, whether you're in St. Pete Beach, in those hotels, or here, or in Clearwater Beach, that's the same thing. We have packed vehicles, packed buses going out there with workers, getting to those jobs. There was an article in the paper a couple weeks ago by Robert Trigot noting that Pinellas County just ranked last, last out of 339 biggest counties in the United States in job, in wage growth, weekly average wages. We actually went down by 4%, which leading the nation, or being the worst in the nation as far as job income. We are rebounding from our economy very well, but we are not seeing the high-paying jobs, the high and mid-level paying jobs, as much as we're seeing the growth in low-paying jobs. And that's a problem, even if we all, here in Madeira Beach, or we all have our job, that we're not going to be able to grow ourselves out of, and we should be very focused on that. Pinellas County, as you know, is built out, and can't, doesn't have room to grow outward like other counties do. So we do need to look at a different transportation system, where you don't have to build CEO parking and use that land in that way, but you can build upward through transit-oriented development, where folks can get there a different way. That folks are favoring to look for an alternative way to get around, to get around where they can enjoy, have entertainment, to live and play and grow, and raise their family. It is about our kids, attracting our kids back here to get, to get jobs in our community. But I know there's a vote. This is a vote this coming November. I know you all, the council, has seen a presentation by the opponents of this, which probably don't mention, didn't mention this too much in their presentation, but there's a key component to Madeira Beach, for Madeira Beach residents, that you should be aware of. When they, this is a 1% sales tax, a penny sales tax on consumption of goods, not all goods, but it is up to $5,000 on consumption, that will be voted on by the voters this coming November. At the same time, the PSDA property tax will be eliminated, will be zeroed out. So the way that works for Madeira Beach, I have looked up the average or the median house value, which is $352,000 in Madeira Beach, they're paying PSDA, for relatively limited service, just your trolley, $220 a year. That will go away, go to zero. The sales tax, according to IRS, the median income for Madeira Beach, they'll pay about $121 for that penny sales tax, based on the IRS's estimate of how much, how many goods and services you buy that are, that are taxable, $121. So the net savings, even if you, even if Madeira Beach folks never ride, never, never need the system, to ride the system, saves them $100, $99.07 in total taxes, under the Green Light Pinellas Plan. That's certainly a key component, the folks that, it's one of the key reasons I'm here tonight to speak about, is because a lot of people don't know about this, or they're, when I give these presentations, they say, oh, well, gosh, I had no idea that was going to happen. That sounds like a great deal, even if I never have to use it. Again, this is a 1% sales tax, and it works out to be 2 cents on your Starbucks Large Coffee, $1.80 on your flat-screen TV, zero on groceries, and zero on medicine, of course. Now, this is a way, the Green Light Pinellas Plan represents a way that Pinellas County and Madeira Beach can have a system that it deserves, a 21st century public transit system that fits our county, and we can lead on this. In 2010, the Hillsborough referendum for a similar sort of initiative failed, largely because they hadn't reached consensus, they hadn't developed this detailed plan like we've developed here. Let me just, let me just summarize again. What the Green Light Pinellas Plan is about this coming November is about reducing your taxes. Number two, it's about providing a great transit system for Pinellas County and eliminating the need, or reducing the need, to widen more roads. Number three, of course, and probably most important, it's about attracting high-paying jobs for our kids, for young people, to come and be attracted to move here, for high-paying jobs, companies to come to Pinellas County and be competitive, and bring, and create jobs for people here, so that people can live and grow and raise their families. That's my pitch. I'd be glad to answer any questions for the council, or any other questions. And again, if you are interested in considering a resolution, we can provide you one, or I can provide your city manager with one, or we can take it from there. Okay.
Excellent presentation, Brad. At this time, I'll open it up to the commission. Do you have any questions for Mr. Miller at this time?
There's no sunset on the sales tax, right? It's in perpetuity?
Uh, yes. Essentially, yes.
And Brad, looking at everything going on, you know, some of the questions I always hear, some concerns, you know, where's the property coming from? Now, what I've heard is 80% of the property for the tracks is pretty much already in control of Pinellas County. Is that correct?
I think it's, it's about 62/3.
Okay.
2/3 is publicly owned right of way.
Okay.
Yeah.
And also, I mean, as far as the beach trolley, when I've talked to people in the hotels that are staying out here, I mean, the system, most people I hear from, they come from the airport, they do the buses, they come out here, and the jolly trolley system is excellent. I mean, once you're out here on the beaches, it works up and down, it's trying to move people around the county, that becomes a problem, and this seems to be a good solution to the problem with the additional buses, doing the tracks part of it. The other question I had for you, actually, besides thinking of some of those things, was the additional, is there going to be like different substations throughout? Would that work through central Pinellas? And also, with what TIA's doing, expanding out of Tampa International and their transit system around the airport, is there going to be a tie-in to this eventually, between Pinellas County and Hillsborough County? Or is it just going to be within central Pinellas County, or working the tracks in central Pinellas County?
Oh, well, I think, if you're asking.
Shotgun question.
First on the, sort of, whether or not there's going to be hubs or nodes throughout Pinellas County, yes. I mean, the plan has a whole network of routes throughout Pinellas, also connecting out here to the beach, of bus rapid transit lines, rapid, faster operating, not necessarily speeding buses, but ways in which the, the system can operate faster to get you from point A to B faster, including express connections, express routes, over to the airport, directly to the airport, from both St. Pete, and an express line from the beaches over to St. Pete, to the airport, and as well as up by Clearwater, Clearwater Beach, over to the airport. There's also express routes to Tampa for commuters, where, right now, we hardly have any, we don't really have any, especially over the northern Pinellas County, certainly don't, we have no service at all over to Tampa on the weekends. That's, that'll all change. There'll be seven-day-a-week service to and from Tampa, express routes, where you can drive your car and park, and then hop on a bus. You could, you could take that to the airport. You could drive and park for free, instead of paying whatever you pay at the airport, and leave your car, and then take the, take the bus to and from, the express bus to and from the airport. So yes, those connections are all in the plan.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioners? At this time, I'll open it up to the floor. Anybody in the audience have a question for Mr. Miller on what's coming up? Troy, yes, sir.
Thank you. I wanted to ask you a question. Blake Sutton, 129th Avenue. I've been taking PSDA since '08. The win-win situation. Operate your vehicle on $770 a year, gas, maintenance, car payment, insurance. With the buses going from the beach to where I work, off Olmerton Road, Olmerton Road is a debacle, and I see accidents every day, and I thank God I take the bus. So it's a win-win situation. And with people coming back and forth to work, yes, I do see people that I've seen not working or coming back to work, you know, that's great because of Governor Scott's creating jobs for us. And it's above-average-income people like myself that take public transportation, not just low-income people. Bottom line, it's a win-win situation.
Troy, thank you, sir. Brad, do you have anything else?
No.
Commissioner Lister?
I just have, it's across the board, Brad. I'm looking for some shelters in Madeira Beach to sort of bring it to a beach look, and I just wanted to make sure that, you know, when, when it passes, and I think it probably will, I just want to make sure that we get some beach shelters out here.
Yeah, I think.
That slide of the tourists coming to John's Pass, you can see those people getting on the trolley, they're in the sun.
I know. I, my family, my own family just spent some time, we went to John's Pass, we stood right there with my kids. It was hot. You're right. I know my, my staff is working with your city on a beach-looking shelter for, for Madeira Beach. We have a program where we'll actually provide some of our, we'll, we'll provide money to help make that happen.
There you go.
Yeah.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Mr. Miller, I think you answered the commissioner's question perfectly. Yes, sir.
Drake Philbrook, 800 Bay Point Drive, as most of you guys know me, I'm not around here a lot, because I travel all over the world. And most of the major cities I go to rely on a close-knit public transportation system to make their cities work. It's not easy to get started, but when you see the results of a city that's been living with a modern transportation system for a decade or two, it's amazing to see how many more people use it, and how much less pollution there is, and, you know, how much more interaction there is between everybody in the city. People are walking, they're riding trolleys, they're riding the buses. It's just the way of life for people in most cities around the world, so we should be there, too.
Sir. And Mr. Miller, that's actually a good point. I know that as many times as I've been to DC, traveling around, I use the trains. I mean, that's the way to get around, but it creates commerce. You have businesses that open up around these stations, so, I mean, it is, overall, it is a good economic impact for the county, moving people and creating business.
Can I ask if the council would be amenable to considering a resolution of support?
Sure, we could put it on for our next workshop, Mr. City Manager. Could we add that to the, what, the 24th VOC workshop for discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have a model of resolution you can send?
Yeah, I'll send you. Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good seeing you again.
Yeah.
It gets better every time I see it.
Sort of.
And Representative Peters has joined us. Representative Peters, I'll go ahead, if you don't mind, I'll give Mr. Miller a few seconds. I'm sure he's got a few other things to run off and do, so I'll let him pack up and have your presentation next.
It take a five minutes?
Yeah, it'll take five minutes.
We'll hit the cabbos, we'll stop.
Yeah. Hey, Catherine, I'm going to do a five-minute recess, let these guys clean up and then...
Oh, you want to wait?
Yes, ma'am.
Great.
Thank you. At this time, we're taking a five-minute recess. 35.
This is terrible.
Our next presentation will be Representative Kathleen Peters of the great District 69. Representative Peters, good evening, and it is great to see you in the city of Madeira Beach. Beach.
It's great because Madeira Beach is in District 69. Thank you, Mayor, it's good to be here, it's good to see you all, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good to see you, too.
I am really pleased to be here, and thank you for indulging me and letting me come and give you an update on this legislative session. I know Commissioner Poe had passionate and energy to really take care of that vacation rental bill, and I apologize that it kinda got watered down. We did pass something, it's a start, and what I would say is let's not stop the fight. Um, and I wanna cover some stuff that might not have been in the news, so I'll probably give you a little different perspective than you might get with somebody else. Um, and then if there's something you do wanna know about, I'll, I'll answer any questions that you have. There's a couple of things that I'm real proud about, and that is, for the first time in decades, I believe, the legislature has finally addressed our most vulnerable citizens in the state of Florida. Um, many years ago, in the late 1990s, I worked at the Juvenile Welfare Board, and way back then, I was fighting to get the juvenile justice laws and the foster care policies changed, and to little avail, and decades later, here we are, and we finally, in the last two years, have really focused on Florida's most vulnerable citizens, and, and it's late, but at least it's about time. So, what I can tell you is, um, we did a lot on, on human trafficking. Now, human trafficking wasn't an issue decades ago, but it certainly is now. Um, it is a big problem in the nation, it's a big problem in Florida, and Pinellas County has its share. We have passed laws for the children, and what you need to know is the average age of a child that is trafficked is 13, and the life expectancy of someone who is being trafficked is seven years. And when we, when we were getting these young girls or boys that were being trafficked, we had found that, uh, what we were doing is charging them with prostitution. So, now we are criminalizing them and revictimizing them. So, we passed a law that they, if they have been trafficked, we cannot charge them with prostitution or a crime. And with that brings some challenges because we've not had to provide the mental health services and the recovery services before, and we're having a difficult time finding a model that works, and since these children have not been charged with a crime, we can't even put them in a lockdown facility to keep them there, to give them the mental health services and the counseling services that they may need. So, as we work through that, know that we're committed to find a way to make sure that these children are whole and can have a normal life again, um, if and when we're able to rescue them and get them out of that situation. Foster care as well, and many of you know that I did a lot of work on homeless, and if you don't, I'll tell you about that in a minute, but our foster care system, the state of Florida's lost 477 children in our system because we aren't doing it well. We haven't been doing it well for many years. We are now changing the policies and the hiring criteria for people that work in DCF and work with the foster care system. We believe that's one step, and we're not finished with that, that's gonna take a couple of years, because some communities use the sheriff, some don't. There was missed, there was not equity in how they got funded, and there isn't even a system in which they should be doing investigating or case management, and so we're trying to find some best-practice models that will assist us to ensure that we do a better job, that when we do investigate, we investigate the best to give the judges the right tools to make the decisions if children should stay in their homes or if they should be, um, And we wanna make sure that the case managers have low caseloads because we have case managers in some cases that have 40, 45 cases, and that's unacceptable. So, those are things that we're working on with foster care, and the other situation is foster care, of all the kids that end up in the system, I've been told that 1/3 end up in the juvenile justice system, 1/3 end up in homeless on the street, and so you have 1/3 that may end up resilient and, and lead a normal life. And to me, 1/3 is not okay, and these are children that are in the system by virtue of nothing they did. So, I think it's our obligation to make sure that we take care of those children, and when we did the normalcy bill, and what most people don't know about foster care, is that if you are a foster child and you wanted to go to a sleepover, let's say you're 10 years old and you want to go to a sleepover, slumber party, you would have to get a background check for everybody that'd be in that house, and most 10-year-olds don't want people to know that they're in foster care, and so they aren't gonna participate in the slumber parties. And if you were an athlete on a school football team, for example, and you had to travel out of the county to play, you couldn't go because you can't leave the county. The foster parents do not have the ability to make those decisions and let you do it. And so, we passed a normalcy bill to give foster parents the ability to be more like regular parents, and I believe that that's gonna go a long way to keep the kids out of the juvenile justice system and on a healthier pass, path. The other thing that we were doing that was not conducive to helping them transition successfully is that when they turned 18 years old, they were no longer awarded the state, and so they were released out of the foster care system. Now, if you're a senior in high school and you turn 18 in September, you still have high school to finish, but you're no longer awarded the state, so you're taken out of your foster home, you're given a check as long as you stay in school, and you have to find a way to live and survive while you go to school, and if you don't stay in school, then you don't get the check, but nobody taught you how to open a checking account, nobody taught you how to set up cable or electricity, nobody taught you how to negotiate a lease, nobody taught you any of that stuff, and yet we'd put them on the street and tell them, okay, you're off on your own, you're 18, good luck. And so, this is why many of them ended up in the system or homeless, because they just couldn't do it. So, now we've passed the Road to Independence Bill, which will allow them, as long as they stay in school, to stay in foster care till they're 21, and they must receive life skill training and financial fitness training so that they can then transition on their own independently and survive on their own, um, once they're 21 years old. They can leave earlier if they choose, but they do have to have that financial fitness and life skills training, and I do believe that that's gonna help us. And it's critically that we do this because if they're, 1/3 of them are contributing to our homeless population, and, and that's where I'm gonna go next, homeless was a big part of what I've done for the last year and a half. Florida is the fourth-largest population in the country, but we're the third-largest population for homeless. Now, our climate lends itself for that, that's true, but we also went through the worst recession that we've ever seen, and we had the highest unemployment rate, we had the highest foreclosure rate, um, pretty much among the highest in the nation, and as a result, families were becoming homeless and they were living in their cars, and when we looked into the most recent report, it was determined that we had 93,000 homeless people in the state of Florida. Now, we're a populous state, and that may not sound like a lot, to me, it sounds like a lot, um, but when we looked at the data, 4,900 are veterans, 2,100 are seniors over the age of 60, and just under 64,000 are children. And to me, that's unacceptable, that we would have 64,000 children that are living on the street or couch surfing. If we're ever gonna fix the trafficking situation, we have to eliminate the feeder system in which they are getting these children. So, homeless was a very important priority to me, and over the last five years while we were having this difficult recession and you were having a hard time managing your budgets and the state was having a hard time managing their budget, they were sweeping the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and we were putting no money in affordable housing or in homeless programming. And so, the bill that I filed with Senator LaValle ensures that there would be designated homeless funding that would provide wraparound services to ensure that our homeless population gets the services they need to get on the path to independence. You know, I, I give examples all the time, and no offense, I come from local government, you know I'm one of you, but when we let local government do it, and unfortunately for Pinellas County, we're really the poster child of what doesn't work. When you remember back to when St. Petersburg first started to address homeless, and we were slashing tents, and we made the cover of magazines nationally. When, when we have a homeless problem, we typically pass an ordinance, and we say, you can't loiter here, and you can't panhandle there, and then we bring the police in because we don't wanna see 'em, we don't want our tourists to see 'em, we don't want our business people to see 'em, so we, we send in the police and we sweep them out, and we put them, because they broke the law, they go to jail. Well, if they go to jail now, they've got a criminal record because they've been charged. If they don't pay their fine, they lose their driver's license, which makes it even more difficult for them to get out of their situation, and, and the minimum cost to go to jail without any services, I'm talking the minimal cost is $105 a day. The minimal cost to put 'em in a shelter is $13 a day. Now, the economy alone makes sense that we let the nonprofits and the faith-based communities work with our most vulnerable citizens who don't even have the basic need of food and shelter, they do it more affordably, they're much more effective, they don't criminalize them, and they can get them on the path to independence quicker. And that's why there will be challenge grants available through the law that Senator LaValle and I passed. Communities can file for up to $500,000 in funding to ensure that we have those wraparound services and transitional housing needs that we need. Affordable Housing Trust Fund did not get swept this time, it wasn't fully funded, and my commitment is that I will work every single year that I'm in the legislature to ensure that we don't sweep that and that we do ensure that we can address the homeless issue that we have. In addition, those of you that are involved with the League of Cities know that I partnered with the Art Institute of Tampa to do an education campaign to educate people about the true face of homeless, because most people don't know that the majority of our homeless, the real true face of homeless are children. They truly believe it's the person behind, under the bridge, or, you know, on the street corner, and in fact, that's not, and I think it's our responsibility to educate the citizens of Florida so that they know and that they can help be part of the solution. So, um, the Art Institute is about to release their second, um, season of messages. Their first season won seven Addy Awards in the Tampa Bay region for their messaging, and then those, uh, seven applications went to the southeast region for the United States where they won two Silver Addy Awards, and I'm very proud of them, they did not win the National Addy Award, but know this is a quality campaign. And I'm bringing that up not only because the college is giving me the second season next week, but because they've also made a commitment to give me two more and do all of this in kind again next year. So, we'll have a total of four seasons, and what I ask of you is that you help us communicate their messages that they are generating for us, either through your newsletter, on your website, anything that you send out as a communication, if you can help us by putting some of the billboard messages that they have either on your website or in your newsletters, I truly would be grateful and thank you for that, because the homeless hits all of us. And it's also a cost that we're all gonna pay for. So, aside from that, we, we had a good budget, we, we reduced, we had a $500 million tax cut. Education benefited greatly. Now, I can tell you, uh, the education systems are not happy because, just like we didn't fund homeless, we did not fund capital improvements, and you know what it's like when you withhold maintaining buildings for five years, you get so far behind that it almost becomes an undaunting task to catch up and just to get to where you need to be. And so, the schools are experiencing that, we did get in capital funding this year, some PICO dollars. It's not enough, and we have to continue to work on that, and we will. We also eliminated waiting lists for a lot of our most vulnerable citizens, so the Americans with disabilities, their waiting lists have been eliminated, the Alzheimer's waiting lists have been, uh, eliminated. Kid care will be fully funded, and that's our Medicaid for everybody that's eligible in the state of Florida is gonna be fully funded, and so the children, the people with disabilities, and, um, expecting mothers, all will be fully funded. Economic development, we did very well, they did not raid any of the money in those trust funds, the transportation trust funds, so you'll see a lot of jobs, a lot of transportation jobs are gonna be expanded and moving forward. Pinellas County has quite a long list, um, in which they'll be working on, so there'll be construction here for a long time. I met with DOT, and I did send in a request from all of you to let me know if you had any DOT issues, and I didn't hear from you all, so, um, know that if some come up, to please call me. Several cities did give me some issue, I've met with them, and they are either addressing them or telling me why they cannot, but we're holding their feet to the fire to make sure that they're, they're, not only, one complaint from one city is, every time I call, they're very polite, but they aren't very cooperative. And so, the secretary has assured me that they will work on their cooperation skills and see if they can cooperate quicker and better. So, um, I'd like to be a partner with you to make sure that the department does that. I'm really pleased about the GI bill that passed. Florida's never passed a GI bill, that's typically a federal thing, and they took my veteran tuition bill that for three years, even before I was in office, I tried to get that bill passed, um, and they used that as the vehicle for the GI bill, and I'm really proud of that, and that gives any, any veteran the opportunity to have in-state tuition once they are honorably discharged out of the service. It also created a memorial and some other benefits as well. So, I'm proud of that bill, it should never have taken three years to pass, but I'm glad it finally did. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is some projects you can expect. St. Pete College, um, they're, you know, I'm alum of St. Pete College, but I'm very proud of our, our state college. St. Pete College has always been ranked, I mean, if any of you went, you know, it's always been ranked one of the best community colleges for, you know, decades, and I'm really proud of it, and so last year, my number-one priority was to make St. Pete College the first and only center of excellence in the country for orthotics and prosthetics, and I don't think I reported here last year, so you didn't know that, and I was successful and effective this year, they have everything in place to become that center of excellence. There are only, they are one of 10 institutions in the country that offer that degree. What makes this special is because there are only 10 colleges, institutions, or universities that offer it, that kinda gives us a niche, but because now we'd be the center of excellence, we will be the only one in the eastern United States that offers certificates and things like, that the FDA is now requiring, so things like a podorthis fitter, which is below the knee, or a mastectomy fitter. Mastectomy fitter is a one-week certification program, and you cannot get that anywhere in the eastern United States, so people have to come here, live here for a week while they take that course, and eat in our restaurant and stay in our hotels. If you wanna be a podorthis fitter, it's anywhere from eight to 12 weeks, and so for eight to 12 weeks, people have to come here and live here and eat and shop here while they do this. And so, that's destination education, and I think it's another wonderful niche that Visit Florida can help us work on marketing. So, um, I'm really proud of that. What you can see this year that I did for St. Pete College is, they have a little marine science lab over by your middle school that's in a trailer, and we got them $2.5 million to put the building up, and so you'll see those programs expanding, and that building will be put up relatively soon, I assume, since the money would be released June 1st, it'd be available. So, um, that's exciting, I'm really pleased about that one, and I love working with the college, they're a great partner. The other thing that I did is I, Gulfport came to me, and so I'm gonna tell you this because I want you to keep this in the back of your mind as you plan this summer, and I've already spoken to your city manager and your mayor about it. Gulfport came to me with some issues with water, and as you know, we've got some new numeric criteria, nutrient criteria rules that Florida has to adhere to, and so they needed some stormwater money and they needed some sewer money. I was able to get them $500,000 for their 49th Street Stormwater Project, and I was able to get them a little more than half of the money they needed for the sewer project in, um, the Pasadena Country Club, um, community where the sewers crum, well, it's in trouble. So, so we got them $250,000 for that project. So, know if you have some projects in the future, particularly water projects, because of the numeric nutrient criteria rules that we have to adhere to, you saw there was a lot of money put in the Everglades, that was in the news, there was a lot of money for springs, we have to keep them clean, it will cost the state a lot of money, you know, the state of Florida's the only one that has to adhere to those rules, and, and we will be the test pilot for cap and trade when we start buying nitrogen on the commodities market so we can prepare the nation for the carbon cap and trade when that comes, so. So, it'll be an interesting ride, but know that I'm willing to work hard for you if that's what you need, just like Gulfport needed. There's a whole lot of other things that I'm really proud of, we were able to bring home some money for All Children's Hospital, for USF, St. Pete's Business School, their School of Business, we've got them $10 million to ensure that their School of Business actually has a building currently, they don't, um, and I think that helps grow the whole economy. So, know that your delegation is working, and this is the other thing, and I wanna open for questions, I'm sorry I'm going so long, but this is important, and you'll never hear about it in the news, and I usually open with this, and then there's one other thing I wanna talk to you about. When I first got elected, I really believed, because I used to go up there, and those of you that have been around for a while, if you paid attention to the legislative session, when, um, there were a couple of years where it was very top-down leadership dictating, and, and it could be perceived to be dysfunction like Washington is how I perceive it. And so, when I went to the legislature and when I got elected in 2012, I expected this mandating down about how you're to vote and partisanship and polarization, I expected that, and that is not what I experienced. What I experienced was bottom-up leadership. We were told that we would never be dictated how to vote and that everybody would have an opportunity, no matter who they are, what their party affiliation was, to get their priorities done if they were willing to work hard. And what I can tell you is, and this is what you'll never see in the media, my first year of the 2013 legislative session- of the 2013 legislative session, 289 bills passed. Almost 200 of those bills passed unanimous with no con debate. That's not dysfunction. It's not gridlocked, and it's not polarization. This year, 265 bills passed, and more than 200 passed unanimous with no con debate. Sure, there are issues that we don't agree on, and there are issues where we might be polarized on, but not on the majority, when more than 200 of 265 bills passed with no con debate. So know that your Florida legislature, regardless of your party affiliation, is working. And it's working cohesively. It is working as a team. It is working collaboratively, and it is working through bottom-up leadership, and that is a good thing. And that was the wonderful surprise that I was able to walk away with. And I feel that people should know it, and you'll never get that in the media. So, know that they're working. It's working, and that we're working for you. The other thing I wanna talk about is, aside from the vacation rentals, there are very few of us up there that come from local government. So when it comes to home rule, you don't have a lot of advocates up there. So if you are not actively involved in the League of Cities, you need to be. This year, we had numerous bills and numerous amendments that were put on bills that were gonna take away your home rule. And as passionate as Commissioner Poe was on vacation rentals, you are very close to losing a whole lot more of your home rule authority. And they were little chips away at little things, but all those chipping away can equate to a lot of loss. I strongly believe that the local government is closest to the people and that they really need to be making decisions because citizens can come in here at every one of your meetings and they can come up, whether it's for three minutes or however long you give them, and they can tell you about what upsets them, what they agree with, and what is wrong. And if you don't do a good job at local government, they can vote you out. They don't have the ability to go up to Tallahassee and come in front of us with three minutes or whatever it is to tell us on each bill what they like or don't like, or what they think is wrong or not wrong. And for us to take away more home rule authority from you, I think is wrong, especially when we complain when Washington does it to us. So what I need from you is a strong voice, and I mean a strong voice. There were comments made to me that make me believe that for the next six years, you're gonna continually see chipping away at home rule. And if, and I can tell you, just last week, there was an article in Florida Trend Magazine, and the article said, "Businesses in Florida still find it hard to expand and grow their businesses because local municipalities make it difficult with too many barriers to overcome." And when that's the headline, and you have a legislature that's trying to grow their economy and make sure we have another economic driver other than tourism and agriculture, and they read those kinda headlines, they say, "See, it's that local government again. We gotta take away some of that authority that they have and make it a business-friendly state so we can grow our economy." And what they forget is, and I use examples of Bel Air Beach, where they have two pieces of commercial property, and they're condo hotels, so they're not even all that commercial. And those people move to that community because they don't want commercial. They don't want it. And should it be up to the state to take away the elected body's position and ability to pass ordinances to keep the city the way the people want it? They don't mind paying the higher taxes because it's what they want. And so why should we take the authority away from that body to let them govern to keep it the way the people want it? If the people don't feel they're governing right, let the people unelect them and put in other people. That'll do it the right way, and that's my position. But I can tell you, I was battle-fatigued with how many times I had to stand up and fight for home rule because there aren't enough up there fighting, and we need you up there speaking, emailing, and getting your citizens to help you do it. And so there's my soapbox. I'm on it, and I apologize, but it's important. And Commissioner Poe is probably the most passionate one. She was great. We still had it watered down, but if she wasn't as passionate getting everybody else going, we wouldn't have even gotten that. So we really need you to be, you know, she's a great model. She really is. So, I'm sorry she's not here. Any questions? I'm sorry I went on.
I'm sorry, Representative Peters. One question, and I know you've talked about a few things, you know, with your homeless bill and things like that. What are you looking, what's your plans for the future far as, I know we have some issues in EMS that can be probably taken care of in Tallahassee?
We do, we do. And, you know, this is a bill that, when I was mayor, I thought was critically important, if you want me to elaborate on that?
If you would, please.
Okay. This is another home rule issue for me, and I hope you see it the same way I do. When I was the mayor, and when your mayor got elected, I pulled him aside and said, "You need to be with me on this." I felt that every time the county was going to mandate down how they were gonna run EMS, it was an unfunded mandate, and it always, always led to government suing government. And I just don't feel that that's the right body to be the authority. I believe they can still run it, but I think that the voting body should mirror something like the new MPO PPC or the PSTA where every single city, because every city is responsible for EMS, every city's responsible for it. So that way, every city would have representation on the authority, and they would be making the decision, and it wouldn't be an unfunded mandate from another body down, it would be a mandate from your peers, your cities, who are all responsible for it. And so, that is my proposal. It was my proposal before I ever got in the House of Representatives. The legislature at that time didn't see it my way. And then Senator LaValle wanted a study done. When I asked last year, the fire departments and some city folks said that, "Oh, no, the study was done. We're good. We're not worried anymore." And then, lo and behold, 28 days before session was over, I got phone calls, and this was before the county administrator was gone, saying, "Can you do an amendment? Can you get that through? We're in trouble again." And then I hear several cities are gonna start suing the county, and so government suing government again, and I don't think that's the right solution. I couldn't put it on as amendment because we needed a 30-day notice, public notice, and we were on day 28 left. So there was nothing we could do. So, what I told those people and anybody else that's involved is, if you can get me, everybody on board, all the fire chiefs and the cities that believe that this is the right thing, then we'll file that bill next year and we'll do it. But I really need, I don't want people fighting. I don't want it to become a polarized issue. But I believe that the right people that should be on that authority should not be the county commission. I believe it should be representations of the cities who are responsible for the system. That's my take on that.
Thank you. And also I wanna thank you, and you brought it up for the Money for the Marine Service or Science Center. That's actually large with the issues that we have here in the state of Florida, the Gulf of Mexico. Thank you very much. That helps provide accurate science for national marine fisheries in the long run. So thank you very much for that. As a fishing industry, as you well know, here in the state of Florida, I think it's a half a billion dollar a year plus industry. So locally, it trickles down, you know, with local, plus having the largest pass in the west coast of Florida here, it's a big thing for us. So thank you very much for all your help with that. Does any other commissioners have anything for Representative Peters?
Just wanna say thank you for all your hard work, because we know you do come from here, and we appreciate it. And so when you go back up north, we know that we're represented well. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Keep it up.
And Kathleen, if you don't mind, you know, there's a few members in the audience who probably never have had a chance to ask you a question or talk. And at this time, I was gonna open up the floor. Does anybody in the room have a question for Representative Peters? She's your state representative. Guys, y'all got a question? What happens? She's taking, she's taken very good care of us. So Kathleen, I can't thank you enough. You've been a good role model to me. I mean, the first person I met when I walked into the Mayor's Council was Mayor Peters. So, thank you very much.
And I gave you lots of work to do.
And thank you for everything you've done.
Also, I know the mayor's aware of the manatee management plan. There's not a large impact to Madeira Beach, but there will be a large impact to the entire intercoastal waterway. If you've not seen the plan, there's only two more meetings left in which input can be provided. I recommend you give input if you'd like to. But the only place you'll be able to go on plane if the maps pass will be Madeira Beach and a small section of St. Pete Beach. The rest, all the way up to Bel Air, will be idle speed. There are restaurants that people might wanna go to, but it's gonna take them hours and hours to go there. Most recreational ski areas, recreational boating areas for jet skis tubing, kneeboarding, will be shut down. So that means our 16-year-olds and our 18-year-olds and our other folks will have to be going out into the Gulf of Mexico to do their recreational boating, which can be very dangerous, very different than what's in the intercoastal waterway. I think some of the plan is overreaching. Don't get me wrong, I support our manatees. I wanna keep them safe, but some of this stuff seems to be a little overreaching, and I'm concerned about it. So please voice your opinion. The time is clicking. Once the advisory committee submits the recommendations to Fish and Wildlife, they will hold public hearings. But if you can get the recommendations where it's a good recommendation from the start, I think we're in a better edge than if we're trying to take something back down that's already been submitted at kind of a high level. So, watch for it. But if anything else comes up, know that I'm gonna, you know, I'm there for you, I'm a resource for you. My staff is a resource for you. You know, don't get frustrated and say, "Oh, this government is such," you know. Call me, let me know, and we'll see what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Peters.
Oh, and I'm gonna come back to you because I want you to come to me with your plans prior to, please, 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 prior to September, so I can start working on your asks early. Thank you.
We look forward to seeing you this weekend. Alrighty. Next consent agenda, excuse me, public comment. This section is reserved for public comments on matters or concerns pertaining to city business and which are not on the agenda. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Is there any public comment this evening? No? Moving on. Next consent agenda, none. Next item H, unfinished business, ordinance 2014-03. Mr. City Attorney, please read it by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, ordinance 2014-03. An ordinance to the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the city of Madeira Beach Code of Ordinances to amend Subpart A, General Ordinances, Chapter 62 Taxation, Article II, Local Business Tax, to increase the levy of the local business tax by 5% and correction of typographical error on 25E Boat Marina or Storage, including dry storage, 11-50, or 11 through 50 slips, by providing for reading by title only, by repealing ordinances in conflict and providing an effective date. That was the second and final reading of ordinance 2014-03 by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that this commission pass ordinance 2014-03 on second reading.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst the commission? Is there any comments from staff?
None on this one.
Is there any further comment? Would say clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, new business, ordinance 2014-04. Mr. City Attorney, please read it by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, ordinance 2014-04. An ordinance to the city of Madeira Beach, amending Section 34-402 of the Code of Ordinances to add additional nuisance activities and to enlarge the pattern of nuisance activity from 30 days to 45 days, providing a codification clause, providing a conflicts and severability clause, and providing an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance 2014-04 by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to pass ordinance 2014-04.
Second.
Motion's have made and seconded. Is there any discussion amongst the commission? Is Mr. City Manager, is there any comments from staff?
No, on this one, this is the first reading. I think the meat and potatoes of this ordinance change is to change that nuisance activity timeline from 30 to 45 days.
Is there any further discussion from the audience? Say clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, third amendment to Madeira Beach Lease Agreement Regarding Fantasy Planet Beach Company. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll submit, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion's have made and seconded. Is there any discussion amongst the commission?
Just for clarity's sake, Mr. Mayor, that was a motion to approve the third amendment to the Madeira Beach Lease Agreement.
Yes.
Okay.
Is there any comment from staff?
No, Mr. Mayor, what this does is give a five-year renewal to the current tenant with the right to renew for an additional five years upon mutual consent. The other part of this was, from Vince's standpoint, a prompt payment clause that, you know, taxes, insurance, and whatnot will be paid by a specific date. And then, probably, which will be the biggest issue, is the reserved parking on Village Boulevard where there are two cones, and we all know that drama, I don't have to sing that song again. We'll ask the current tenant, well, it's being dictated in his lease, that we'll move those two spots to the adjacent parking lot.
Is there any further comment? Would say clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe? Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. This time, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the Pinellas County Umpires Agreement Addendum.
I make a motion that we approve the Pinellas County Umpires Agreement Addendum. Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion's have made and seconded. Any discussion amongst the commission?
Do they get a raise?
Yes, phased-in raise, which is all it is. Very...
Commissioner, should you be voting on this? Play ball.
I was the umpire for years. I'm still the umpire.
As long as he's not calling the shots, he's okay.
I thought he was still in the game. He's retired?
Oh, yeah, no, I've retired.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor...
Is there any comments from staff?
Again, this is just a very subtle increase phased in over the next couple of years. Nothing that staff has objection with.
Okay. Any further comment? Say clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. And Mr. City Attorney, correct me if I'm wrong on this next item. I believe we were looking for the authorization of engineering services to CPWG for the utility undergrounding. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
This was actually authorization of budgeted expenditures. That was...
Budget expenditures?
Yes, sir.
I apologize. Writing's up here's a little like Chinese tonight. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to award the engineering services to CPWG for utility...
No, 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 no.
Excuse me, budgeted expenses.
The motion that we need is authorization of budgeted expenditures to them. So if we wanna go with that motion.
Okay, then I'll make the motion to the authorization of the budgeting for the CPWG for utility undergrounding.
There you go.
Okay.
I'll second it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, motions have made and seconded. Any discussion amongst the commission? And Mr. City Manager, then move forward. I remember this presentation from the previous workshop.
Yeah, this just gets them rolling. Frankly, it gives us enough budget to get binding estimates, those types of things that we need to do to get rolling on this project, with the anticipated, you know, start date somewhere between the next 12 and 24 months.
Now, once the bill is, Mr. Finance Director, once the bill's submitted to us, we'll be able to go ahead and submit that bill to the Big C.
We're already approved.
Again, and I just wanted to catch everybody up, I believe you've already made that presentation to the Big C.
Yep, Vince and I put that together. Jim Simons got back to me, they needed a little additional information, staff put that together, got it off to him, and we got a confirmation letter just the other day on that, so, that's good. Remember, this is that circumstance where Vince and I had this conversation today, it's like, you know, we were debt-free for all these years, and now, oh my God, we're borrowing all this money. This is one of those situations where we're gonna borrow a bunch of money, but we're already pledging the revenue from the county, it's like borrow it yesterday and pay it today type thing, so we're gonna have to do that in order to get this done, but it'll be a quick in and quick out type financial transaction.
Is that for the new poles and so on, all this on top?
Yep, it'll bury everything that's going east and west, get the nice new poles, the single wire going down the street, those types of things, and then whatever, if money is left, we can do the end caps of both sides of the town and get everything buried, so, be a pretty substantial change.
Do we submit that all at one time to the county, or is it, as we go in phases?
Yeah, it goes in phases, just based on the completion of the work, excuse me, and as we make the payments, it's, we can do it quarterly. In fact, we just submitted an invoice to the county today, actually, for everything along Archibald. So, we're on top of it, and we'll continue to be that way for the rest of the project.
It's just gonna depend on when we start this and when we roll over, you know, I think we're in year two now of rolling over. If this is 24 months instead of 12 months, that'll change things somewhat, but it'll still be the general idea of, you know, borrowing what we need, paying it off immediately as quick as possible, but we have to do that, and that's, I mean, that's the argument about these beautification dollars, is $300,000 a year doesn't do it, but $300,000 over the curse of eight years does it, and so why can't we have our full amount upfront, it's just not the way that it's structured, it's a pain, but it's doable, so, we've got the capacity to get it done.
And it is over the next six years for those payments, I think we let the first year roll over, went into the second year, now this and then...
And now we do it again.
The third year will roll over?
We're gonna continue to do it until we're ready to rock, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Mr. Mayor, did we, I missed the first 30 seconds of the meeting, did we refer item four? I'm sorry.
Yeah, we referred four to the workshop.
Yeah, I wonder if we, we might not be ready for that, I wonder, and Tom, you can help me out here, I think we should refer that to a date uncertain, because I don't know if we're gonna be ready even by then, and frankly, I think we're all on board with the idea, I don't think it needs to be workshopped, I think we need to take formal action, so that would be the wrong venue regardless.
Could we just change that at the workshop if it's not on there? I mean, we've already did that at the...
Yeah, I wonder if it's just more appropriate to table the item, and we can agendaize and take it off the table at that time. The only problem is, it's not dependent on Tom and I, we're waiting for the other side, and so, you know, you can't yell at one of us this time, we're waiting on them, so, I would, if there's a way to go back in time, Tom, you might have to help them out here procedurally, but to just to table the item, and then we'll take it off the table when we need to.
When the time comes, you can just remove it.
Right, I think that that's probably a better idea.
Is that right?
We'll just table it, which it's been referred, but...
Well, you've already made a motion, so I think you got it.
It's already on the workshop, when it comes up at the workshop, you're just gonna table it then.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Does the commission have any further comment on the services to underground? Okay, is there any further discussion? Would say clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, Resolution 2014-21, Mr. City Attorney.
I read Resolution 2014-21 by title only. A resolution of the City of Midair Beach, Florida, amending the FY 2014 budget by decreasing budgeted Gulf Boulevard improvement expenditures in the amount of $300,000 and providing for an effective date. That was reading Resolution 2014-21 by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we pass Resolution 2014-21.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion amongst the commission? Is there any comments from staff, Mr. City Manager?
Refer to the Finance Director just to walk you through it real quick.
Yeah, this is just following up on the discussion we just had, so basically, everything that we're not planning to spend this year will be rolled forward to next year, and we'll do that by amending the budget.
Any questions, commission? Is there any further comment? Would say clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Item seven and eight have been referred to the next workshop, correct me if you want to, we did that. Item nine, Resolution 2014-22, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, Resolution 2014-22, a resolution of the City of Midair Beach, Florida, amending the FY 2014 budget by decreasing budgeted debt service expenditures in the amount of $58,153.15 and providing for an effective date. That was reading Resolution 2014-22 by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that Resolution 2014 be adopted.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion amongst the commission? Mr. City Managers, are there any comments from staff?
Just refer, or defer to Vince to walk you through it real quick.
Yeah, just real quick on this one, so, at the time, excuse me, at the time of putting the budget together, the estimates that we had for debt service were pretty simple, we knew that we wanted to limit debt service to $300,000 a year, and we figured with the first year only being, only having to pay six months in the first year, we figured $150,000 was a good estimate. It turns out that the initial year payment was only $91,000. So, this is just continuing to actively manage the budget throughout the year, so what we didn't pay, we will take out of the budget, and it'll become part of fund balance.
Excellent, thank you, that's excellent. Is there any further comment? Would say clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, Resolution 2014-23, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Resolution 2014-23, a resolution of the City of Midair Beach, Florida, to establish an annual and daily special event parking permit, providing for an annual permit to include five specified events and additional events authorized by the city manager, providing for a daily permit to include individual special events, by providing for the repeal of Resolution 2014-19, by providing for reading by title only, providing for distribution and providing an effective date. That was reading Resolution 2014-23 by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to pass Resolution 2014-23.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion amongst the commission?
Well, I think this is a smart idea, director, I said to the manager. And I hope that, that Wayne's sitting here in the audience, that this is in the newspaper, written well, that the people will understand what this resolution has to say, because it'll be an asset to the community, and if there's events going on, people have some space, we're always looking for parking, and so, I think that'll be important, Wayne, to get that across in the newspaper article, what the city is trying to do, for these people, and that they earn a little money on the side here.
Well said, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, you know, you passed a version of this not too long ago, in fact, oh, it might have even been a month ago. Amy and I worked hand and glove on this, and it was funny, because we knew there were five holidays or five times, but we could only come up with three, and the next weekend was like Memorial Day, and I was like, ugh. So, we wanted to add Memorial Day and Labor Day right out of the gate, because if you asked the deputy in the back of the room, it was bonkers all weekend long, and so, that just provides, you know, a lot of relief in terms of the parking congestion problem that you got in town. So, and you've given me the flexibility to, you know, if we ever have a festival or an event that you say, "Hey, this is a big deal, we can go ahead and authorize people to park like that." So, no one got tickets on that weekend, we just asked them to come on in and retroactively pull a permit, and most complied, and so it's a popular idea out there in town.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, is there any further comment? Say clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next, reports and correspondence, does any commissioners have any reports or correspondence? And the only thing I'd like to report, this month, the City of Midair Beach hosted the Big C meeting, and I want to thank Commissioner Schatz for coming out, and Mr. City Manager, to you and your staff, we held it outside, I think it was probably the first Big C meeting ever held outside on the beach. We got to show off Archibald Park, and I have received nothing but compliments from the mayors and representatives from the Big C, so guys, fantastic job, it was great, well attended, and y'all did a good job, so thank you very much for helping us show off our beautiful city and our beautiful park.
They were impressed, let me tell you.
Absolutely.
Commissioners, I usually give the mayor a hard time for those types of antics, but I gotta tell you, it was a complete success, he had everybody in Hawaiian shirts and shorts, and they had, everybody I think had a blast, in fact, I think they'd all probably come back next month if you wanted to hold it there, so it was a job well done, I can't take any of the credit, Cheryl and a couple of the other gals around took care of most of it, but Mayor, you did, did a good job.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, any good news?
Just have, yeah, one little thing, you know, as you know, you have a special magistrate here in the city, and over the years, he has entered a number of orders that place fines on properties for people not keeping their properties up to par, and on an occasional basis, Vince's office gets a payoff on some of those special magistrate liens, and I go through the process of preparing their releases, and Judy Walker in his office and Vince do a very, very good job with that, but I just wanted to, you know, give kudos to him and Judy, and he doesn't really bring these things to you, and so I'm gonna just blow his horn a little bit tonight, and that is, is that he has received payment, or the city has received payment for almost $5,000 on a special magistrate lien that's passed at the end of last month, and we're releasing that lien by, the release of lien that was prepared by my office but signed by Shane, but this is for the property that was once owned by Robin Michelson, and the property was 14,052 West Parsley Drive here in Midair Beach, so, $5,000. So, I just wanted to let you know that that has occurred. There are other ones, and, you know, and maybe it'd be appropriate at some point for Vince and his staff to tell you just how much money they actually collect from code enforcement liens, because it's, although there are some costs associated with paying for the special magistrate for city staff and code enforcement back in the day, it's basically found money. So, anyhow, I just wanted to let you know that you've just received about $5,000.
Excellent. Good news.
I'll say something.
Mr. City Manager, is there a way that, well, you knew I was gonna ask that, Vince, is there a way that you could do a presentation, maybe at the next upcoming commission meeting, where we have, because I've known, I've kind of heard this through the year, our last couple of years, where we've been able, in working with people, and actually, you know, where properties have set in vacant, and working with people, actually where we've come out ahead, and also the property has been redeveloped.
Yeah, you mind if we just, for me to ask Vince to put a presentation together right about now, i.e. there's a little budget we gotta put together, you know, if we can wait and just use it for filler in our future workshop?
That's what I'm saying, just sometime in the future, if you don't mind.
Absolutely, not a problem.
All right. Sorry, I didn't mean to create work, I was just trying to blow to this horn, so...
This is bad timing.
I do just have to say...
If you gave us more money, we gotta make the people work for it.
It's 100% my staff's effort, so, they do a very good job staying on top of that.
Excellent. Outstanding job once again, Vince, outstanding, so, and Tom, thank you very much for bringing that to our attention.
Sure.
Mr. City Manager?
My report is brief, but while we're touting Vince, Vince passed his second test for the Certified Public Finance Officer License, and he passed with a 94, which was one of the highest in his class, so, again, Vince is on a roll. I don't know when he gets time in to study for that stuff, he's gotta be doing it while he's sleeping in the office, because his truck's always outside, so, congratulations to him on that. The budget, Vince and I have a pretty good grip on it, you heard, and Vince, what's our assessed values going up?
5.72 percent.
So, the assessed value is up, I'm, the city manager's budget is going to include a small, modest millage rate increase, and as you well know, what you guys do with that city manager's budget from there is completely up to you, but I'll be happy to explain any of the components of that and the reasons why for that, but one of them is to start saving, to put money back in the bank, we've been doing a lot of good with the money that we've had in the bank, but I think we need to be responsible stewards and start replenishing those dollars. Long story short, Vince and I are asking for a July 1 budget meeting, we'll present the budget to you, we won't go into too much detail, I think you'll get the fourth grade version of that on that day, and then we should have a subsequent meeting, and, you know, maybe two weeks later. That way, you have time to meet with me, meet with Vince, digest it a little bit, and then be able to have a public hearing and go through the necessary protocol after that point. Right now, I'm anticipating, just to be ready for it, I'm anticipating a millage rate increase from 1.79 to 1.99. That will be in the city manager's budget, again, that's not cast in stone, you guys are the ultimate authority on that. Onto happier things, volunteers, we need them, coming up this weekend especially, so the bone tournament, you all know that we're down on Mr. Holton's property, we're gonna have 30,000 people in town between Thursday and Saturday night, and we need some volunteers, so I'm talking to the viewing audience at home and the audience here in the room, anybody, if you can even donate two hours, call the volunteer desk tomorrow, call Cheryl in my office, and we'll get you chocked up, but if you know anybody, if you got a neighborhood group, anything at all, they're struggling, so we need some help. And then, on top of that, volunteers are needed for the sea oat planting, Saturday, June 28, this will be on our website from 8:00 in the morning until 11:00. The city provides gloves and water, sunscreen, and then there's a little lunch afterwards, so we'll have that up as well. So, I think last year we had about eight or 10 people, Mayor, I think you and your wife participated, it'd be ideal to have between 15 and 18 people, I think, something like that. So, that's all I have, if anybody has, you know, any concerns or questions, this weekend's gonna be bonkers in town, there's gonna be crawling with people, be ready for it, be ready for parking problems, be ready for upset neighbors, be ready for whatever you need, I'll be on call 24 hours a day throughout the weekend, we've got additional deputies around, we've got additional security around, we've got additional everything around, but this is the biggest one they've ever thrown, it's gonna be something else, 30,000 people in a town of 5,000, that's gonna be, that's a chunk of people.
And the good things, folks, from what I understand, we're gonna have the Food Network here because of the barbecue, and that Jack Daniels sponsoring that, they are extremely happy with the competitors, the amount of competitors coming in for this, and remember, the winner of this gets to actually go to Tennessee, and I guess this is a big networking thing for the Barbecue Association of the United States.
This is huge, I wanted to call them a cult, and that always sounds so negative, but this is like a culture of people that is second to none, I mean, these people are really passionate about this thing, I think the mayor is a guest judge for some of this, and some of, we've got some other local celebrities that are doing it, but quite, quite an issue, we've, so we've got that part of it, Mayor, you're right, and then we've got another news group of somebody that's actually filming the entire tournament, they're actually gonna go fishing during it, you know, now I think they're challenged by the mayor fishing against them or whatever, so that's a new component to the show or whatever, but I don't know the network that it airs on, but it's a cable television network that's gonna fish the whole tournament, so, the exposure's getting out there, they're coming to us, we don't have to go hunting for them lately, so...
And, Mr. City Manager, just one thing that I noticed, you said July 1 for a meeting, is there any way that could be July 2? July 1 is the opening of gag ruper season.
Vince, we gotta start checking that.
I'm sure we're all gonna be out catching gag ruper.
It actually has to be by July 1, so we can do it earlier.
Earlier.
Is it possible to do that? I mean, I wanna put you on...
Yeah, let's do that right now, you have a workshop on the 24th, Vince, what if we did it on the 26th? Thursday, the 26th? I know that cuts down on the, on the time, either that or the 30th.
Yeah, I'd probably prefer the 30th.
Just at that time, all you're doing is handing it to the commission, and I'm sure the Vice Mayor could...
No, 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 you need to be here, I mean, this is a big one.
Yeah.
Can we do the 30th, everybody cool? I just, A, you know, you can decide on the time of day, I don't, I wouldn't recommend not doing it in the afternoon, only because usually, you know, for a public hearing, you don't wanna do that, you wanna do it after working hours or whatever, but this is just my presentation to you guys to walk you through it in a very generic fashion, so you could even do it in the afternoon if you wanted to, right now, we have it slated for 6 o'clock, but you could bump it up, we have plenty of chances for public interaction on this, I mean, we're not limiting that in any fashion.
Okay, something like that, like 4 o'clock and 5:00.
Should we do 2 o'clock on the 30th?
That's a Monday.
Yeah, does that work for everybody?